Good evening. I will now call the June 10th, 2025 meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the bylaws of the Cumberland County, Virginia Board of Supervisors to ensure a fair, orderly, and safe meeting. Excerpts from the bylaws pertaining to public conduct in the meeting has been posted outside the open room. Ms. Grant, please follow along.
Mr. Hamlet?
Here.
Mr. Newman?
Here.
Ms. Tyree?
Here.
Mr. Stimson?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Now, at this time, we will have a negotiation.
Let us pray. O mighty God, we acknowledge your presence in this place and thank you for your mercy, for your grace. We pray right now that you will give us your wisdom, impart with us your knowledge, that as we seek to do the business of the folks of Cumberland County, that we will be good stewards of their resources. For it's in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
At this time, we will have a negotiation.
I pray that we just salute the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have county administrative comments.
I thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just a couple of quick comments. The first will be related to the Green Ridge Public Hearing that was originally scheduled for this evening. I'm just going to read a statement. It's very similar to what we produced on Friday afternoon and has been posted publicly here at the meeting in our website. The public hearing for conditional use permit 24-01 Green Ridge Recycling and Disposal Facility scheduled for this evening has been postponed to a future date, time, and location to be determined. At this time, negotiations related to the conditional use permit and host agreement between Green Ridge and the Council for Cumberland County are ongoing and will continue until a future public hearing date is determined. If approved, CUP 24-01 would replace the existing CUP 18-06 approved in June of 2018. Once a new public hearing date, time, and location is identified, the county will issue additional informational alerts and follow all state code requirements related to public notice in the meeting. For information related to the project, please visit the county's website and click on the Green Ridge Project tab under the Your Government icon. My next comment for the board and for the general public is related to our Employee of the Month for the month of June, recognized in June for the month of May, and that is Ms. Gina Morrison. She's not here this evening to stand up and wave, but Gina is our permit tech in the building inspections office, and she's been selected as the Employee of the Month because she exemplifies outstanding customer service. She has worked very hard to streamline procedures in that office, and she is truly a dedicated servant to the residents of this county. So with that, just wanted to take an opportunity to recognize her as the Employee of the Month, and those will conclude my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Stamey. At this time, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Certainly. Second.
Mr. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Newman?
Aye.
Ms. Tyree?
Aye.
Mr. Stimson?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
At this time, we will have a public comment. Only in the business who have signed up for the public committee period will be allowed to speak when called upon by the chairman. Members of the Board of Supervisors or county officials will not respond directly to the questions asked during the public committee period. Instead, answers will be directed through the county administrator at a later date. Please provide contact information on the sign off sheet to all properly respond by the county administrator.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me the time to speak before you this evening. My name is Betty Myers. I live at 577 Deep Run Road. My first comment has to deal with the agenda, especially consent agenda for this evening. I'm glad to see that it has been revised to be properly reported. The consent agenda, as based upon my knowledge, is supposed to be a listing of things that's normally being taken care of by the board and not different items that aren't related to happening everywhere. Last month, I think it was handled wrong. I think second date for the public hearing for Green Ridge was handled wrong, and it's evidenced here again today with your agenda where each one of your items is being done by a motion instead of a motion rather than under the consent agenda. So I appreciate you all correcting that. I do go through the board package as it pertains, and I did find an error in the item from Stephanie Johnson, reference Res. 27-01, the Valco Investments LLC. It stated in here on the second sentence, "The request is to rezone a 2.92 acre parcel of land at the intersection of SR 60 Anderson Highway and SR 654 Bingham Road from R2 Residential to B1." If I'm, I don't leave them wrong because I've looked at this a thousand times, and I write on 654 all the time, that's actually Pine Road Road, and Bingham Road is Route 606.
There's no one else on the speaker this time? So at this time, we have state, local departments, agencies, nearly service providers to report. First, we have County Public Schools.
Good evening, members of the board. How are you this evening? I'm here in place of Dr. Jones. He wanted me to make sure you knew that he had a medical appointment with his wife today, and that's why he was not able to attend, but he asked me to let you all know that. I'm here to give you a report on the highlights from Cumberland County Public Schools. We've been really busy with the closing of school and some events that have been going on in the middle school. Mr. Moyer has been named the new principal of Cumberland Middle School and is doing an extensive search right now to find an assistant principal for the middle school. Huge thank you to Dale G. Robinson for donating a second printing of his book to the Cumberland Middle School High School Library, featuring a poem of some of our seventh graders that they wrote and sent to him. And we also want to congratulate eighth grader Darren Woodson for earning an all-state first-team honors in the Discus and shot put in the Virginia Middle School State Track and Field Championship. So the future's looking good for our track program. With the high school, graduation was a wonderful celebration. It went really well for the class of 2025, and thank you, Ms. Tyree, for coming out and being a part of that. Our track and field teams had a strong showing at the VHSL State Championship at JMU this past weekend. Congratulations to Kelly Willmack and Sidney Winswell and our softball team. They got all district and all region honors. We had several of our football players go to camp at Virginia Tech last Sunday and participated in a recruitment camp. Ms. Woodson and the FBLA team are leaving for Anaheim, California on the 26th of June to compete in the Nationals, and thank you, a special shout out to the Public School Foundation for donating some money to them and helping make that happen for those girls. And the FFA had its annual banquet this past weekend. They were celebrating student achievements and leadership. They actually presented Dr. Jones with a plaque and a jacket and made him an honorary member of the Cumberland FFA. The high school boys' track and field team were district champions. Ms. White, who was a Spanish teacher in our school, received the Dan Daniel Award for Scholarship and Citizenship from Longwood this year during her graduation, and we had several CHS seniors earn associate's degrees and advanced studies diplomas from Southside Virginia Community College. We had students from the high school who had no discipline referrals and good attendance go to us Sun Chase Movie Theater down in Farmville to do a movie viewing during a school day. It's kind of a little, you had good attendance, and now you need to take a day off, but they enjoyed it, and it works. Our culinary arts students will be preparing meals for the Hampton-Sidney Basketball Camp that we would be hosting here in our gym this year. We're excited about that. And several of our high school students had artwork displayed in Farmville as a part of the Longwood Center for the Visual Arts Exhibition that's going on right now. The elementary school, our students created beautiful, the window front when you go down Main Street, Farmville, all of our elementary students have participated in that, so shout out to them and to Ms. Overstreet, our art teacher. Ms. Tillot's Little Dukes earned a gourmet lunch with the principal using their Duke dollars at the fish and pig. Our second graders had a successful market day, bringing economics to life in the classroom. And Cumberland Elementary School Sadie Fletcher won gold in the 1500-meter race walk, girls ages nine to 10, on June 8th at Christopher Newport with a number three national ranking, so she's right up there. Her grandparents told me this weekend that she's going to do AAU track this summer, and they're very excited about that. Spring sports wrapped up with the competitive postseason. Baseball and softball played last week. Baseball lost nine to 10 at Sussex, and the girls' softball team lost six to four at Amherst, so it was a good season for them. The senior nights were played at Longwood this year. They allowed us to play softball and baseball on their fields, and that was an awesome experience for our students and the students from Prince Edward. And we, again, want to congratulate our boys' track and field team on their James River District Championship. Other highlights, Peyton Turner, who is a rising junior at Cumberland High School, is now at North Carolina State University as part of the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Conference that's going on down there. Cumberland County Parks and Rec is offering summer activities for families, so make sure that you all get involved in that. Check it out. And a special thank you to Bojangles for donating classroom books to our students so that they can enjoy reading and expand their reading selection. Thank you very much for your support of the schools, and this time of the night.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Stamey, members of the board. Ryan O'Macher here with the Virginia Department of Transportation, here to go over the report for, this way?
That way. That way. Yeah, but lift the mic up. Lift the mic up.
Okay. I'll lift the mic up. I'm sorry. All right. Better?
Yes.
All right. All right, here we go. So I will go through slides I put together for this past month. I wanted to thank Mr. Stamey for last month. It was not available. I was on vacation, which is needed for a lot of us, and just thank him for presenting the slides for you all. So for this month, cap through the budget, this slide here, again, we're at the tail end of the fiscal year, which ends June 30th, and as I indicated throughout the course of the past several months, the spend plan and the amount expended will meet come June. We did get a small influx of funds the past month or two, and that was applied towards some additional paving you have all seen out there, out there in the roads in the county, and I'll speak to that in a moment. This slide here is the representation, again, of the work orders for the month. The takeaway on this slide is there's about twice as much as there were last month. A lot of that has to do with the storms and the rain that we have coming through, so it's just an indication of what we have going on this time of year. This slide here, again, the construction projects, it's not officially complete. You saw the paving that was done on Rain's Tavern and, excuse me, not Rain's Tavern, on Paul Rail Randolph, and I think Putney was the other one. It's almost complete. The service treatment project, this will begin in July. The department is out there now ahead of the contract work, doing some patching, so your constituents will see some activity out there associated with that. Next month, I will add some information on these slides. There is a RoboStrick project that's coming out, and there's also a sign project, and I'm not sure how much of that work is actually in Cumberland County, but I will share that with you all next month. Miscellaneous items, secondary six-year plan, I will speak to that later on the agenda. Bug me sign, Mr., where is he? Mr. Stimson. I've compiled the locations within the area. Now, it's going through the assessment and seeing what we can do and where it'll be located, and I will update on that in the next meeting. Mowing has started throughout Cumberland County. The primaries are being done by department employees. Secondaries are being done by contract employees. Again, just a reminder to you all and the citizens that if there is any issues with site distance, please call 1-800-4-Road-Number, and we can look to get those addressed. Safety concern. And as back to the paving, the VDOT work that was completed, and I believe, or excuse me, Mr. Stamey may have mentioned this in the last meeting, but the Plank Road and Rain's Tavern were built done by the department, and there's still some pavement work, so I have to be, you know, on Plank Road. Short report again this month, that's all I have, at least for the record. Do you have any questions for me now for the secondary six-year plan? Thank you.
At this time, we will have a finance report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. The first item that I have here this evening is the monthly budget report. You'll find that on pages one through 10 of your board packet. That is for your information, but if you have any questions, I'd be glad to take those. The next item that we have is requests from the Cumberland County Public Schools, and this is starting on page 11 of your board packet. The schools has requested that the board appropriate funds remitted to them in the amount of $163,930 through the governor's approved budget as a SOQ bonus position payment. The funding must be used for bonus payments for SOQ-funded instructional and support personnel. It is my recommendation that the board approves the appropriation request in the amount of $163,930 to the Cumberland County Public Schools for purposes outlined in the funding requirements. This appropriation does not require any local funding.
Do we have a motion to approve the appropriation request of the Cumberland County Public Schools?
Mr. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Newman?
Aye.
Ms. Tyree?
Aye.
Mr. Stimson?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
The next item can be found on page 15 of your board packet. The Emergency Services Department received funding through the Emergency Management Performance Grant in the amount of $7,500 through the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. This is a pass-through funding from FEMA and is used to assist state and local governments to prepare for emergency situations. With the current funding, VDEM approved the following purchases: two Toughbooks in the amount of $5,500, as well as four Stryker replacement batteries for emergency services equipment, and that was in the amount of $2,000. While the grant did require a local match of $7,500, we were able to use expenditures that had already been allocated in the FY '25 budget. Therefore, no additional local fundings were needed. It is my recommendation that the board does approve the budget appropriation in the amount of $7,500.
Do we have a motion to approve the appropriation request of VDEM as presented?
Mr. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Newman?
Aye.
Ms. Tyree?
Aye.
Mr. Stimson?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
The next item starts on page 22 of your board packet. This is our annual funding for the emergency department's allocation of the Four for Life Funds. The funding is legislated by the Code of Virginia, which stipulates that an additional $4 per year is charged and collected at the time of vehicle registration and is set aside to a special fund to be used for EMS purposes. As required by the Code of Virginia, these funds are returned to the locality in which the passenger vehicle is registered. The Code does restrict the use of these funds and must be used for training emergency medical personnel or for the purchase of emergency equipment and supplies for the nonprofit emergency medical services agencies. The Virginia Department of Health has remitted $12,992, which is to be used in accordance with the grant guidelines. It is my recommendation that the board does approve the appropriation for the annual Four for Life Funds in the amount of $12,992.
Do we have a motion to approve the Four for Life right appropriation request as presented?
Mr. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Newman?
Aye.
Ms. Tyree?
Aye.
Mr. Stimson?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
The next item starts on page 28 of your board packet. The Finance Department is requesting that the Board of Supervisors approve the following budget transfers and supplements for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. The budget supplements does total $85,971.93, and the supplements total $3,773.93.
Do we have a motion to approve the budget supplements and transfer for fiscal year
Mr. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Newman?
Aye.
Ms. Tyree?
Aye.
Mr. Stimson?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
The final item that I have this evening is a request to appropriate funds for the
FY '26 budget. Virginia Code Section 15.2-2506 does require that the local governing body appropriate funds prior to any expenditures being paid. At the April 29th, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting, the fiscal year 2026 budget was adopted in the amount of $42,898,705. Pursuant to the Virginia Code section, staff requests that Board of Supervisors appropriate funds totaling $42,898,705 for the budget commencing July 1st, 2025.
Do we have a motion to approve FY '26 budget appropriation as presented?
Mr. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Newman?
Aye.
Ms. Tyree?
Aye.
Mr. Stimson?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Thank you, Mr. Stamey. Next on the agenda, we have planning and zoning.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, you'll find the planning and zoning report for the month of May on pages 71 through 75 of your board packet. Currently, the zoning department has a few pending conditional use permits and rezonings, same as last month. The Green Ridge Recycling and Disposal Facility, the Cumberland Fire EMS Radio Tower, Kenny's Place, Seventh Day Adventist Church for a conditional use permit, the industrial park rezoning, and then the REZ 2501 Valco Investments rezoning from R2 to B1. Zoning permits issued for the month of May were one commercial accessory permit, 12 residential primary permits, four residential accessory permits, and four farm structure permits. Staff approved six subdivisions with 54 still pending, and there were three survey of existing lots and site plans that were approved with 32 still pending. As far as commercial erosion and sediment control permits active, we still have three Henrango County for the Cops Creek Reservoir Project. That project is technically complete, but we are still waiting on final stabilization of about eight acres. And then we have the Summit Ridge Energy, two solar projects down 45 that are still under construction. There were eight residential EMS permits issued, as well as we do have some pending code amendments that hopefully staff will be able to start knocking out here soon. And that is all I have for you this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Stamey.
Madam Chair, the county attorney has the report.
At this time, we have a motion to the consent agenda. Mr. Stamey, can you please provide an overview of our consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I have two items for your consideration this evening under consent agenda. The first is the approval of the bills, and the second is the approval of the minutes from the May 13th, 2025 meeting, found on pages 76 to 85 of your board packet.
Members of the board, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Newman?
Aye.
Ms. Tyree?
Aye.
Mr. Stimson?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
There's no any own business. Not when we don't want to do business. Request a separate public hearing.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. I've got three items under New Business this evening. The first item for your consideration is Code Amendment 24-05, Board of Zoning Appeals. Just to give you some background on this item, Virginia Code Title 15, Subtitle 2, Chapter 22, Article 7, Sections 2308-2314, regulate the local Board of Zoning Appeals, and these sections of state code were updated in 2022, requiring an update of our local ordinances to ensure continued compliance. Staff has drafted, and the county attorney has reviewed, and the draft recommended changes to the local ordinance. We are recommending that the board set this code amendment for public hearing and hold that hearing on July 8th, 2025.
Do we have a motion to approve the request of a separate public hearing for CA 24-05, Board of Zoning Appeals for July 8th, 2025?
Second.
Mr. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Newman?
Aye.
Ms. Tyree?
Aye.
Mr. Stimson?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
The next item under New Business for the board to consider is an additional request to set a public hearing, and that's related to a rezoning 25-01 Valco Investments LLC. And this request is a request for rezoning that's been submitted to staff and sent to the Planning Commission. The request is to rezone a 2.928 acre parcel of land at the intersection of Anderson Highway and Blenheim Road from R2 Residential to B1 Business. The Planning Commission held its public hearing on Monday, May 19th, 2025, and unanimously recommended the rezoning request of the Board of Supervisors for approval. At this time, staff respectfully requests that the Cumberland County Board of Supervisors set the rezoning request REZ 25-01 Valco Investments LLC for a public hearing at their July 8th, 2025 regular meeting.
Mr. Stamey, what is the purpose for rezoning this to business point?
What is the purpose for rezoning this to business plan?
So the proposed development is for a DG market, so a Dollar General store at that location.
All due respect to Dollar General, I can tell you right now the people of Cumberland County don't want another Dollar General. So I'm gonna just say that.
So do we have a motion to approve the request to set a public hearing for REZ twenty-five dash zero one Valco Investments LLC for July eighth, twenty twenty-five?
Excuse me, Ms. Tyree, can you put the mic up so they can't hear you back here?
Do we have a motion to approve the request to set the public hearing for REZ twenty-five dash zero one Valco Investments LLC for July eighth, twenty twenty-five?
Second.
Mr. Hamlet?
No.
Mr. Newman?
Mr. Hammond.
Ms. Tyree?
Yes.
Mr. Stimson?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Next item under new business for the board to consideration is the appointment of a Social Services Board member. The current Department of Social Services District Three Representative Jerry Seal has decided to resign from his position. Chairman, Ms. Tyree, also the board liaison to the Department of Social Services Board has recommended Mr. Seal for appointment as the District Three Representative of the Local Department of Social Services Board to fill the vacancy. Staff does recommend Mr. Seal's appointment to the board for consideration to the Local Department of Social Services.
Do we have a motion to appoint Mr. Matt Seale to the Department of Social Services Board as requested?
So good. Second.
Mr. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Newman?
Aye.
Ms. Tyree?
Aye.
Mr. Stimson?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Next, we have public hearings.
The public hearing on your agenda for this evening, members of the board, is the public hearing related to the VDOT Secondary Six-Year Plan. I'm gonna invite Mr. Locker to come to the podium as well as we work through this. On April eighth, twenty twenty-five, you may recall that the board held a workshop in conjunction with VDOT related to the Secondary Six-Year Plan. And as part of that workshop, discussion was held regarding available funding, potential projects, and their locations. VDOT has worked with county staff to prepare recommendations based upon those discussions for board consideration. And as far as, we are recommending the secondary roads to remain as previously approved by the board, but for Crowder Road to be added for twenty thirty-one. The county staff does recommend that the board approve the plan as presented, as well as the associated resolution related to the plan itself as required by VDOT. With that, I'm going to move on to the next.
Sure, what I'll do, at least for the record, I will go through the items on the Secondary Six-Year Plan. This is for FY twenty-six, thirty-one. I will go in priority order. A little post-it here, I'm sorry. Priority number one, just priorities number one and two that are actively being worked on at this moment, and they are still in this plan because the funding has not been fully utilized. So as they get finished, they'll come off the plan. So priority one is Route seven oh one, Atkins Road, from Route forty-five, Dead End to Dead End, distance one point zero miles. Priority number two is Route six ninety-two, Briar Creek Road, from Dead End to Route six seventy-six. Priority number three, Route seven twenty, Randolph Terrace Road, starting at Route seven fifty-three to Dead End, that's point two-five miles. Priority number four is Route six seventy-eight, Cotton Town Road. This is from Route six thirty-eight to Dead End, this is point five miles. Priority number five is Route six eighty-eight, Garnett Road, from Route six thirty-nine to Dead End, that's one point one miles. Priority number six, Route seven nineteen, Hobson Road. That is from Route six seventy-four to Dead End, point three-two miles. Priority number seven is Route six forty-seven, Brown Road. That would be from Route six oh one to Route six fifty-four, it's two point five miles. Priority number eight is Route six seventy-two, that would be Sports Lake Road, from point seven-five miles north of Route seven oh eight to Route six thirteen, for a total of point four miles. Priority number nine is Route six seven three, is Ligon Town Road. It's from Route six hundred to Route six thirty-eight, it's two point six miles. Priority ten is Route six twenty-three, Quarry Road. That's from Route six twenty-two to Route six twenty-four, that's one point nine-five miles. And priority number eleven is Route six seventy-five, which is Crowder Road. That's from Route six thirty-eight to Dead End, that's one point seven miles. That's all I have for my point. Any questions for me?
At this time, we have a public hearing. Please remember that only residents of Cumberland County or individuals who are in the area are permitted to speak during public hearings and public conferences. If no one signed up to speak, we will now close the public hearing. We will now open the floor for board members of discussion.
Ms. Tyree, if I could, I would like to read the resolution of adoption into the record so that the board can take this. They're supposed to go at the same time, the actual adoption of the plan and the resolution. And the resolution speaks to the fact that we went through the process primarily, and it is required by VDOT. So, resolution of adoption of the Virginia Department of Transportation Secondary Six-Year Plan, whereas Sections thirty-three dot two dash three-five-eight and thirty-three dot two dash three-three-one of the Code of Virginia as amended provides the opportunity for each county to work with the Virginia Department of Transportation in developing a six-year road plan, whereas this board had previously agreed to assist in the preparation of the plan in accordance with the Virginia Department of Transportation Policies and Procedures, and participated in a public hearing on the proposed plan twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty-one, as well as the construction priority list twenty twenty-six on June tenth, twenty twenty-five, after duly advertised so that all citizens of the county have the opportunity to participate in said hearing and to make comments and recommendations concerning the proposed plan and priority list. Whereas Mr. Brian Locker, residency administrator of the Virginia Department of Transportation, appeared before the board and recommended approval of the six-year plan for secondary roads twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty-one and the construction priority list twenty twenty-six for Cumberland County, now therefore be a result that since said plan appears to be in the best interest of the secondary road system in Cumberland County and of the citizens residing on the secondary system and said secondary six-year road plan twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty-one and construction priority list twenty twenty-six are hereby approved as presented in the public hearing.
Do we have a motion to approve VDOT Secondary Six-Year Plan as presented?
So good. Second.
Mr. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Newman?
Aye.
Ms. Tyree?
Aye.
Mr. Stimson?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve VDOT Secondary Six-Year Plan resolution?
So good. Second.
Mr. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Newman?
Aye.
Ms. Tyree?
Aye.
Mr. Stimson?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Public comments. Only any persons who have signed up for the public comment here will be allowed to speak following the term of trial. Members of the Board of Supervisors or county officials will not respond directly to it to question asked during the public hearing. Instead, answers will be directed through the county administrators at a little date. We will provide contact information on the signing sheet to all property owners by the county administrators. At this time, we have Betty Myers.
Good evening, again. My name's Betty Myers. I live at five seventy-seven East Broad Avenue. I'll say this right now about the Dollar General. I'm not in favor of it, but it beats the landfill. So we'll see how things go in the future. Basically, at every meeting, or quite frequently since I've been attending these meetings, I've been told or by members of the Board of Supervisors that whenever you wrote on something, you wrote for what is best for all of the county and not just sections of the county. I try to put this together in relationship to the landfill, and I'm having some real problems. So I would like to hear from each one of the Board of Supervisors members how the landfill is going to improve things for us that live here in Cumberland County, not taking into consideration the small amount of money that right now a dollar and fifty cents a ton for tipping fees in here. I'm talking more about tourism. I'm talking about real estate values. I'm talking about the infrastructure and getting other businesses to come to Cumberland County. I'm talking about traffic concerns. How is that going to improve things in this county for traffic? I mean, it just doesn't make sense. I happen to travel Pine Grove Road on a regular basis. The use of Pine Grove Road by the landfill, tell me how that's going to improve things? How is that going to improve things? I just don't understand it. And so I would like to hear from each one of the Board of Supervisors on the advantages of bringing in the landfill, especially Green Ridge's landfill, and not taking into consideration the money. Thank you.
Next, we have Michael Scales.
Good evening, Chairperson Tyree and distinguished members of the Board of Supervisors of Cumberland. My name is Michael Scales. I live at three zero two Anderson Highway here in Cumberland. And I have two public comments. One is regarding the changing of the date. The vote was scheduled for tonight for the landfill. And I understand the reasons for the change. However, I do ask that the board will reconsider the next scheduling, the ironclad, because a lot of people, both for and against the landfill, are going to come here tonight. I know myself, it's a great hardship for some residents that live very close to the landfill, same as I do. One was disabled, two of them disabled, two of them just got an L tube disc out of the hospital. They were in a carpool country tonight. So it causes a lot of hardship for individuals, not just in that category, just people are busy in general. I know we should be in all these meetings every week, every month. I'm guilty, I'm not. However, definitely was planning to attend tonight. So I do ask that you all consider very carefully the next scheduling because this has been something that's going on for years, so obviously it's very important. So I'm speaking on behalf of those who are for the landfill or against the landfill. Please schedule the next vote date and keep that vote date, if you will. My second comment, I was wondering if we'd considered, and I just finished Googling it, this is something that I think even people that are for the landfill will admit that it poses a threat to Cumberland County. I think even people that are for it realize that, but they think that the threat outweighs the need, the need of money outweighs the threat. And that's a sad situation, but that's the reality of it. Now, we're talking about, what I understand is a million dollars. And I Googled, and in the state of Virginia, millionaires, there are about two-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand millionaires in Virginia. There are eight billionaires. Now, I understand there's one billionaire, there's one, I don't know, they didn't tell me who it was. I'm wondering if we can appeal to the heartstrings of people that have millions and billions of dollars. We're talking about a million dollars to some of those people, that's chump change. Or surely it would be a sacrifice on behalf of a county that doesn't want its future threatened by toxic chemicals forever. I suggest that we consider appealing to the heartstrings of some millionaire, maybe some millionaires. Have a day, Patriot Day, and declare that day unto them. Or a millionaire that saves the county day. That's what they'd be doing, they'd be saving this county. So that's my suggestion that be considered before we really go into the application of mega landfill. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Cindy Booten.
Hi, my name's Cindy Booten. I live at forty-three forty-three Bridge Road in Palatine.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, do you pay taxes here in Cumberland? You only here in Cumberland?
I pay taxes to the state of Virginia that pays for Route sixty. And that's why we're here to speak about my concerns, what you all are doing to Route sixty, which goes through my county. So I am involved in this.
And I totally understand it, but because of our bylaws, and we're gonna be very consistent, I cannot allow you to speak. I do apologize, you can send us-
Even though you're making some money, it's gonna destroy my county. I don't know, I have a real problem with that.
Ma'am, I asked you nicely.
And ma'am, I'm explaining that as a state, as a citizen of the state of Virginia who's paid taxes here and who pays for Route sixty going through Cumberland County, then I have an interest in what you are proposing to do to Route sixty.
You all are welcome to send us an email, ma'am, and I cannot allow you to speak.
I've spoken what I came here to speak. You all are gonna destroy Route sixty and cause so much congestion in Palatine. It is unfair to all the citizens of Palatine and Green Ridge. I'm totally opposed to you. You don't need to touch me. I'm leaving now. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you, ma'am.
Next, we have Ms. Rebecca Frye. Ms. Rebecca Frye? Next, we have Robin Need.
Good evening, my name is Robin Need, I live at 178 Deering Road. I'm also here to talk to you today about the landfill. I've been a resident here in Cumberland County for almost four years, so I'm kind of new to the situation. I'm going to say I'm disappointed, I was under the impression that there would be more discussion here tonight, I realize that that's been rescheduled. The communication about the landfill to the citizens has been sparse, and really unhelpful for the most part. Very, very little information coming out to the citizens on a regular basis, even in the regular board meetings, about the status of the landfill. No one on the board, or in the county, has any difficulty communicating to its citizens when it wants your vote, or when it wants your money. But, there's very little communication trying to get people to fill this room to really share with you our thoughts about the landfill. As you've heard a lot of people here tonight, the traffic, you can have a study from DMV all that you want, we know, every single one of us in here knows, that any study can say whatever you want it to mean. If you travel single lane Route 60 on a daily basis, as I do multiple times a day, as does my 83-year-old mother, as I get behind bus after bus after bus, all the way through Palatine County, that road cannot sustain the level of traffic that this landfill is proposed to bring. I'm also curious about this Dollar General store being placed at lineum and 60, and if I'm not mistaken, that's almost right across the street from where their proposed entry of the landfill was, and I'm curious why my supervisor abstained from the vote on that, I don't understand why that is. When I came here to Cumberland, I heard the board of supervisors at the time say if provided the opportunity to deny the landfill, they would do it. I've heard that said over and over again, and you are being provided the opportunity to do that, but this conditional use is expiring. And I believe, I've been told, that the planning commission has not, has recommended a non-renewal of that. So, here's the opportunity, I have not met a single citizen in favor of landfill since I've been here, heard many, many, many people opposed to it, I've never heard anybody speak as to what advantage it brings. And the last thing that I'm going to say, one of the biggest disappointments I've had is when I drive around and I look at these playgrounds, that I know that Green Ridge paid for, they're built by transfer stations. To me, that's an embarrassment, that's what this leadership in Greenfield feel about our children, and our grandchildren, that they are worthy to play out by a landfill, out by a dump, out by a transfer station. Never seen a child play on one of those. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Mr. Jerry Dunbar.
Gosh, your previous speakers have taken most of my story away. Money, money buys so many wonderful things, and buys so many rotten things, and since I have been in Cumberland, this board has been so disappointing to me, especially for the members. This lady just spoke of transparency, I don't think you people know what the word means. You think if you put something on the agenda, you write a little thing, and one of y'all little blurbs, that the Cumberland citizens are fully aware what's going on, when they're absolutely not aware. This landfill has been going on, I'm told, for, I don't know the exact number of years, six, seven years. Good gosh, do you people get anything accomplished in any reasonable amount of time, even making decisions? You changed this meeting tonight from what was going to be a public hearing on the landfill for some reason. Did you possibly share the reason for that with the citizens? Maybe you did, I just didn't get the memo. Some people have said, well, they're negotiating, negotiating, yeah, they're asking for more money, money again, money. I once said, I believe if a drug cartel came here in front of most of you, if you could get by with it legally, you'd probably approve the drug cartel, because after all, a lot of money there. You seem to not think about these things, you say how good it's going to be for the people, how good is it going to be for the air? Is that landfill going to help our air quality? Is that landfill going to help our water quality? Is it going to help the wetlands, the forest, the neighbors who live, the 38 to 50 people who live there? Is it going to help their property value? What about the possibility of this deep water, fresh water that we live off of, and the future children and generations to come are going to need? Do you care about that? Are you willing to gamble for some money? Are you, apparently you are. How about let's getting some transparency? Mr. Administrator, I ask you to poll the Cumberland Five, it's really the Cumberland Four I'm really speaking to, and I'll say the Cumberland Five, as to what is the status, don't just say you're going to vote about the CUP, what is the status of things? Let us know. Am I done, ma'am?
There's no one else signed up to speak at this time? At this time, we will have Chairman of the Board of Representatives. How do you call it, Robert?
First off, I want to thank everyone who was in attendance tonight for being here, for taking part, whether you were speaker, or whether you were just here observing. This is your meeting, you are Cumberland County, the people, not the boundaries, not the land, but the people, that's Cumberland County, and that's who we should be listening to when we make our decisions on this board. As I've said it before, I'll say it again, you didn't elect rulers, you elected representatives. So, as a representative of District One, I do my part to also represent everyone in Cumberland County. I take your calls, I take your emails, I respond, try to respond to emails within 24 hours. I've talked to a lot of you, and I listen, and I hear you. I'm sorry that tonight's meeting was changed kind of abruptly, but there wasn't anything nefarious going on, just to assure you, because if there was, I'd let you know, you know me. But truly, it wasn't ready, it wasn't ready for this board to take a look at, it wasn't ready for presenting it to the public. But, I'll leave on this, I think anyone who, we talked about tourism, and we talked about bringing business, and I'm all about proper growth, controlled growth, I sent on the, one of the board liaisons to the EDA, New Business Task Force, and we've been trying to recruit industry that fits within the fabric of this county, without changing who we are, we want to maintain our rural character and charm, but there's some necessities that we need, and we've targeted growth in certain areas. Now, I know tonight was just setting up a public hearing for rezoning request, but one of the things, when folks were polled before the most recent comprehensive plan, that everybody wants, I mean, 95% of the people I've talked to in District One wants a grocery store. Now, a couple years ago, Dollar General changed their Dollar General to a market, it was a great attempt, a great attempt, but we actually have a local proprietor, a resident of Cumberland County, that has said, you know what, I see the need, and I want to serve my community, and I'm going to open up a grocery store, and we've got one coming. And I think the last thing we need to do, before that one's even got off the ground, is to complicate things for that local proprietor. So that's why I was a no for just setting a hearing, I just wanted to make that clear. But thank you for coming out tonight, keep making your voice heard, I'll keep listening. God bless you.
Any other board of representatives? Yes, Mr. Hammond, thank you for coming out tonight, for your presence, we do appreciate it. We ask that you come, you bring your concerns, or do it in a manner more respectable and professional way, that's all we ask. There are no other board of members, thank you all once again for coming, we have it all night. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So do. Second.
Mr. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Newman?
Aye.
Ms. Tyree?
Aye.
Mr. Stimson?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?